Twenty-two pages. Do you want your first page?
Yeah.
Okay. Good afternoon. It's a special meeting of the zoning board of appeals on May 9, 2023, and we're being recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. So our sole objective is to go through the draft of the written decision. I guess this is draft number two of the written decision, and ideally come to an agreement as to whether any changes and what changes need to be made, and then ideally we can sign it before the end of the day. So I think the best way to do this is to go page by page, and if anybody has any comments, questions, corrections, what have you, on each page, we can go ahead and make them. So the very first one I had is under case number. Diana, the 23 and the 01, there's a space in between?
Oh, yeah.
So this is going to be, some of these are going to be really mundane.
The big one is, is the official address is 55 Walnut Street, not 51.
We've never heard of an address for this property, whether it's 55 or 51.
Okay, good afternoon. It's a special meeting of the zoning board of appeals on May 9, 2023, and we're being recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. So our sole objective is to go through the draft of the written decision. I guess this is draft number two of the written decision, and ideally come to an agreement as to whether any changes and what changes need to be made, and then ideally we can sign it before the end of the day. So I think the best way to do this is to go page by page. And if anybody has any comments, questions, corrections, what have you, on each page, we can go ahead and make them. So the very first one I had is under case number. Diana, the 23 and the 01, there's a space in between?
Oh, yeah.
So this is going to be, some of these are going to be really mundane.
The big one is, is the official address is 55 Walnut Street, not 51.
We've never heard of an address for this property, whether it's 55 or 51.
Well, Gabby assigned an address of 55, so we have it in our official address book. So it's official.
Very good. Thank you.
55 it is. 55 and above.
So it's referenced in a couple of places.
Perfect. Well, we'll get to the next places. I think it's on page three, but...
Still on page one?
Still on page one.
Yep.
The name of the entity up at the very beginning should not have a street in it. It's Walnut Master Ground Lease LLC. So throughout, the name "street" has to be removed. So it's at the very heading.
Yep.
On the first line, on the procedural history, Walnut Street is right there. And I think it's a few other times.
Yeah, the in paragraph one.
Yep, item number one, first line.
And again, also in one, it should be 55 Walnut Street.
Yeah, but all the headers have 51.
Also, under item one, the application was filed on January 23rd. My letter was dated January 20th, but I didn't file it until Monday, the 23rd.
Anybody?
Do you want a little clerical errors?
I'm sorry?
Under item number two, it's, now the last sentence says, "The board conducted the public hearing the application on." I'm assuming it should be "hearing on" the application.
Yeah, or "hearing of" the application. Yeah, "on." Move on to page two. So under number four, again, it should be 55 Walnut Street. And in number five, instead of "the property," it should be "the site."
At the very beginning?
Yes.
Okay. Also, in the second sentence, it says, "Through the request of proposal process administered by FHA, Beacon Properties."
Yeah, actually...
We'd like to...
There's a reference to property, too.
Is "proposals" plural, or should it be singular?
Do I request for proposals? No, I think "proposals."
Okay.
Is correct.
So Beacon Properties is incorrect.
Should be eliminated, and we'd like to add the words, "A joint venture of affordable housing and services Collaboratives, Inc." Letting them catch up.
A joint venture of who?
And comma, Peabody Properties, Inc.
All right, all right, we're doing all those things. Frank, can you go through it again?
Yep. It should state, "A joint venture of affordable housing and services Collaborative, Inc."
Housing and services?
Yes, plural, Housing and Services Collaborative, Inc., comma, Peabody Properties, Inc., comma, and Onyx, O-N-Y-X, Group, comma, known as, capital W, capital S, W, capital J, V, WSJV, all capitals, Developer LLC. So again, the last comma goes, "Known as WSJV, all capitals, Developer LLC."
Is there a comma after "developer"?
No, that's the name of it, known...
There is not.
No comma.
No commas, it's comma, "Known as WSJV Developer LLC." Oh, I see, yep. And then it should go, "Was selected."
So all of that is replacing Beacon Properties?
Yep. And when we gave you that wonderful flow chart, that was all over the place. All those names were in there.
Okay. I've got one other, well, two other changes in that paragraph. After Foxborough Housing Authority, where it says FHA (in parentheses), make it parentheses, "the," and then quotation marks, FHA (in quotation marks). And then I'd like to add a sentence at the end of the paragraph that would read something to the effect of, "The applicant and the FHA have agreed to enter into a ground lease for a term of 99 years pursuant to which the applicant will manage and operate the project."
Can you say it again?
Yep.
99 ground lease?
Yep, "The applicant and the FHA have agreed to enter into a ground lease for a term of 99 years pursuant to which the applicant will manage and operate the project."
Yes.
Okay.
And is it the applicant, the Walnut?
You would take out the word "street" in that, where it says the applicant entity.
You haven't entered into that yet, have you?
No, well, no, we have an agreement to enter into.
Yeah, I know they had the option...
Yep.
To negotiate by November 1st, uh, November 1st, by June 1st.
Right.
And that's still outstanding?
Yep.
Yes.
What's after "pursuant"?
I'll give you this, Diana, okay?
Just one other note, the second sentence references the property rather than the site.
In paragraph five?
Yeah.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, it's just a...
Yeah, that's the length of our ground lease with the...
Okay.
And then the last sentence references "street" in the name?
This has become another redline copy. Okay, anything else on page two?
Under six, where the third line down, not the sentence, where it says, "Also receives various grants and loans from..." We'd like to eliminate "grants and loans from." Now, I'll read how it's going to write, and I'll do it. "Various financing sources, including but not limited to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and then Affordable Housing Trust Fund." Because they're not really grants, grants you think you're not going to pay back. These are all going to be some sort of financial sources.
So add the "various," it's financial?
So various financing sources. Then after "sources," take out such as the, and put in, "including but not limited to the..." And then you have Commonwealth of Massachusetts Affordable Housing Trust.
Okay.
Do you have all that?
You got it, Diana?
I do.
Good, okay.
And then further down, second to last line, at the end it says, "Mass Housing," as one word. We'd like to change that to "Mass Space Housing Partnership." And you can put your little parentheses, "the," in quotes, MHP, all capitals.
I'm set for the rest of the page?
We are, so.
Anything on three? Anything on four?
So which one, are you working off the draft with changes, or you are a clean one? So on four, is it starting at the top with 16, or continuation of 14?
Uh, 16, not 14.
Okay, just want to make sure I was following along correctly. I got both going, so.
All right, so five starts with "decision." Okay, anybody have any changes on there?
Under general A1, instead of saying revised plan set, I listed out the whole name, Walnut Street Affordable Housing Comprehensive Permit Set, prepared by Weston Sampson and Utile, Inc., Architects, dated January 12th, last revised March 24th. That's also listed under the submissions to the board, if you want to delete the title of it.
Can you do it again?
If you go to exhibit B, where it says Walnut Street Affordable Housing Comprehensive Permit Set, I use that wording instead of saying revised plan set. So that's the title of it, you know, with the date.
That's okay.
Okay.
And we have a slight change for A4. Are you ready? This is a small change, but just because of the wording they've been using. We'd like to say the applicant will construct the project in two phases. Buildings one and two will be comprised of Phase One, and Phase One capitalized, and Building Three will be Phase Two. The P and the T on Phase Two are capitalized. Just a little different, but that's the way we've always referenced it.
So it'll be, the applicant will construct the project in two phases, period. Buildings one and two will be comprised of Phase One. And Building Three, is it "will be comprised of," or is Phase Three, Phase Two?
Either way, yeah.
Okay, let me say is Phase Two?
We just want to... Refer to it as that way, Phase One, Phase Two.
Yeah, Phase One and Phase Two, the first letters are capitalized.
Yep. So we're spelling one out?
Yep.
Yes.
Capital O.
Initial cap.
All right, move on to page six. Anything? Page seven. I want to... Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I had one comment, page seven, B2.
Actually, even before that, just hang on. I want to circle back to B1 at the very end, okay? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, so B2, I just wanted to make sure that we had the wording in here that was very clear, because I believe when we were going through our discussions that there was a distinction between Foxborough residents having the, the initial rent up was going to be...
We've had a comment to add that in there, yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that was clear, because I wasn't sure that was in here.
So under that B2, while we're talking about it, the second full sentence, "Residents of the town of Foxborough shall have first preference for rental of up to 70% of units." And we'd like to add the wording, "At initial lease up of each building."
Frank, can you go again?
So...
So 70% of units?
At initial lease up of each building.
Okay.
Just wanting each building is being leased up initially.
Okay.
70%, of it can be preference for the town of Foxborough residents.
Mm-hmm. All right.
Okay. Is there some kind of a time period for initial lease up? Is that defined anywhere?
It's, um, the process is done by a lottery, and until the building is full is the end of the lease up period. So the lottery will start, and even if you have more than enough applicants, then you're continuing to take from the lottery. If the lottery is run through and you still have empty units, you're still in initial lease up.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Okay, page eight.
Well, you wanted to do B1?
No, I want to go back to at the end.
Okay.
Okay. So B3?
I'm sorry?
B3, we're going to go back to B1.
Yep.
So this is a little bit of an issue, because to get their financing, they technically have to have the building permit in hand. And they get the regulatory sign off and record it at that time. So without the building permits, we can't close because of this. So what we'd like to do is have the building permits issued, but held by the building commissioner, and having him provide us with a letter confirming that the building permits will be issued upon receipt of signed, recorded regulatory agreement. So they can go to the closing with the letter from the building inspector saying, "It's ready to be received upon receipt," you know, saying everything else is done. Need that one thing. So if they don't have the building permit in hand, but the letter will be good enough for the banks. And so you could keep that wording, but just add, we would like to add a sentence saying that the building commissioner...
Will the letter be good enough? Yeah, we just need something to confirm basically what this says, which is, "We'll get the permit once we have the regulatory agreement." But we need something from the community in order for us to close and record.
Yeah, I understand.
Then we can, you know, get it. So it's a little bit of a catch-22, a little bit of a...
Okay. You have any wording you want to suggest, or?
Yep. "The building commissioner shall provide a letter to the applicant confirming that..." Tell me when you're ready.
I'm ready.
Okay, so begin the bill.
Diane is the most important person also.
The building commissioner should write a letter to the applicant confirming that.
"The building commissioner shall provide a letter to the applicant confirming that a building permit will be issued upon receipt of an executed and recorded regulatory agreement."
So we're striking that full sentence and replacing it with that?
Nope, you can keep that first one, because again, it's saying he's not going to issue it until he gets it. But that the letter will be given to us, so we can show them, you know, this decision. Show them the letter saying, "Yep, we're going to get it. Everything's okay, we just need the regulatory agreement. The banks will be fine with that."
After all the other documents are reviewed and approved.
Yep.
Frank, is county correct anymore, or is it just Norfolk registry? Did it call Norfolk County, or, I think it's just Norfolk registry now, isn't it?
I see it both ways.
I think right now in decision, we have it both ways. I think right now in decision, we have it both ways, so.
I think you can go either way. I think generally they drop the county.
Yeah, why don't we just drop it then for this because I think I dropped it elsewhere. Okay.
A website called the Norfolk County Registry.
Okay, anything else on eight?
I had one small word. This is really quibbling, but it's C1, then 1D, the paragraph following that, that starts off if construction activity ceases. It's the last sentence. The applicant shall take all commercial reasonable steps. I thought commercially reasonable steps reads better. It doesn't change the meaning, so it's really just a small quibble.
Nope, that makes sense. Alright, nine.
Alright, so we're on page nine now?
If we're done with eight, we are on page nine.
Okay. On nine, item number four. We're not exactly sure the purpose of that. Twenty-five percent of estimated cost of restoration landscaping. And once they get their financing, they're going to be moving forward. And this isn't typically seen in any of that decisions with any planning board or anything like that, so. I didn't understand why.
Yeah, this was in the Moore Street decision and I think it's here as a vestige of that, number one. And it's probably something that Judy puts in fairly frequently in her decisions. I reviewed our other decisions and I haven't seen wording of this nature. So I guess the question is, is there any importance or any need for that provision at all? I can't think of any.
Number four, on page nine. The landscaping?
Yeah, so being on page-
Page nine, four.
Paragraph four. Yeah, Frank mentioned it to me earlier today.
Yeah, I mean, we've never, so you've never used this in the past?
We use it on Moore Street, but I haven't seen it in the other ones we've done.
Up to you guys, I mean, that's your call.
So, Scott, can you think of any reason why?
It is a safe, it's safe to utilize it, but, I mean, again, it's up to the board. I mean, this is for plants if they expire. For the landscape, right? Is that what we're looking?
This is more if we walk away and we've taken the trees down.
Reforce the site.
Okay.
I mean, the only thing I can think of that might be of value is, let's just say, you put the road in and then walk away. So you've got an area where there's concrete or macadam and no trees. So would it come into play at that point or be of any value at that point?
Probably.
That's the only thing I can think of. And I guess the reason this one differs from any other ones that we've done is because of the internal roadway that you're having. But that's the only thing I can think of where it might possibly, you know, come into play.
Yeah, so you're saying you put the roadway in, but there's no buildings?
Yeah.
I mean, the only comment I'll just make on that is if we're putting roads in, that means our project's been funded, which means we're going full throttle.
Buildings would be in as well, yeah.
So we wouldn't put, like, this wouldn't be a typical, well, not typical, but this wouldn't be a development situation where we're building something maybe on spec and then we're hoping that something will happen after the fact. If we get this project funded, which we have all rights to believe we will, it's going to, the whole thing, we won't get started until we do the whole thing, is the point, you know, that's what I mean. It's all together.
We wouldn't start with the roadways either.
We wouldn't start, right, with just the roadway, right? So just sequencing, that wouldn't really happen.
Yeah, and the Phase Two, removal of the trees won't happen. You know, they're not going to clear the whole site. They're just going to clear enough of Phase One, get that up, and then clear the area for Phase Two. So it's not like Phase One could get up there and you could have a bare area, you know.
I mean, I will say that in the planning board, we've done things like, much smaller scale, obviously, you know, we'll do $2,000 or something we might hold to replace, you know, arborvitae's. I mean, in this instance, I think rather than just a, first of all, I think you decide whether you need it. And that's up to you, the board. But if you do need it, I mean, the twenty-five percent seems a lot. So, I mean, where really are the pinch points? It might be from Walnut and from the neighbors, so you might want to throw some arborvitae, you know, like, it's not going to happen. But if some weird thing happened where you just had a little bit of money to put some arborvitae's or white pine, whatever it would to screen it to make it look like. Because it wouldn't take much to make that site go back to looking like a site. We build mostly about the neighborhood, we want to make sure that it looks. So I think rather than a standard twenty-five percent, either strike it and we don't worry about it or maybe do a much smaller amount where you're really just buying a, you know, some arborvitae's.
Yeah, and again, you know, you have the Phase One, just that area right there. Once that up and going, then, you know, the Phase Two, so the areas are small. Especially when you get to the Phase Two, it'll be even smaller than Phase One. And that's the other thing, you know, we'd like to know what that number is in advance, if it's going to be there. Do you have an idea in your head?
You'll have a small fixed amount?
I don't have a number in my head. I mean, we've done things like 2,000 up to 10,000, you know, it's like, I don't know how many tree, what are arborvitae tree costs, you know, but I would think.
I would say 2,000, $2,500, something like that.
We're fine, you know, we'll even do 5,000 just to make sure everything's covered.
Don't anticipate it happening, but.
Right. And-
Fit for the neighbor, just engage, God forbid, you know.
Just in the event, you know, again, worst case scenario, you may want to change the wording from restoration of landscaping to be able to use it as landscaping too. Because the way I read it was, you know, in case nothing's built there, you want to restore it back to the way it is now. Whereas if like there's a roadway in there, you might want plantings too. I haven't thought about how, you know, you'd want to-
So like a landscape contingency or something like that?
Yeah.
So if we were to say that it provides security in the amount of $5,000 toward the cost, cost, toward the cost of? Go ahead Frank, what wording were you suggesting?
We could probably put restoration, restorative landscaping and/or, Paige, what's the typical language we would put in for like the subdivision?
I'd have to find, I couldn't, but it's, I don't know. It's like a boilerplate, so I can't, we don't write it, we just cut and paste it, so.
I think that would be fine language, don't you?
Yeah.
For those two purposes.
For the purposes, I mean, you could be very specific, you know, that's what we usually are, is in the event the project fails to proceed, you know, the funds can be used to restore, replenish, or supplement landscaping to the benefit of the neighborhood or something like that.
Yeah, that sounds fine.
Yeah, because you couldn't use it unless the project's been abandoned. And I'll be honest with you, you know, if these get people going up, the bank's going to say, no, we never abandoned it. Someone will always be owning it. Someone will always be, it won't be abandoned, so you'll never be able to, to be honest with you, go on the property or do anything.
So you're suggesting Paige toward the cost of restorative landscaping to the benefit of budding properties?
Yeah, yeah, and maybe, you know, the view from Walnut Street. You know, I'm more concerned about the North High neighbors, but then assuming we took care of them, if we had to close it up, you know, you try to find a way to-
Get to the benefit of the town and the neighbors.
Make it look like no one disturbed the site, even though there's a driveway going in there now.
The usual language in site plan, I think, would be fine.
Yeah. I can go grab it if it's helpful, if you guys want to keep going, I can pull it out.
Okay, if you would, alright.
That's, that's clear, alright.
Anything else on nine?
No.
Ten.
On page 10. Paragraph right before C2, "The final plans, specifications, subject to review and approval by the board's designated agent." Can we just put building commissioner?
You want to be the designated agent, Scott?
I guess I have no choice.
That's fine.
I mean, you'll be the ones doing reviewing anyway.
Yeah, exactly. I'll be in the series.
Even if you've got outside consultants, you won't give it until they give us the sign off.
Alright. Okay, on 11.
On item five, at the end of the first sentence, the random one or L.
Where?
After federal.
After federal, right at the end of the, oh, over there. I'm looking at like number five, I'm like, five, that's fine, okay.
Do we always do the snow management plan from DPW for projects like this?
I think so.
I mean, it makes sense, I just don't know if that was always something.
Yeah.
I don't know, if, number eight, should that be signed and sealed, put on the sheets?
So all of them are-
Under C2, right?
Yeah. They're all directives.
Applicant shall sign and seal.
For example, in the ones before, obtain, submit.
I got you.
The most important one is nine, pay.
We have problems with that, but we know we can't change it. Alright.
Anything else on 11?
Uh, no.
Alright, 12.
On 12, item five at the top. There was nothing in the conservation order conditions that had to do with stormwater management plan. So just like that deleted. So it's set forth in the peer review written comments.
So in other words, delete?
The conservation commission's order of conditions for the project. And so it just says, "Set forth in the peer review written comments."
And that's on five, right?
Yeah.
Is there reference to the project again, there's a fine term? Should say the site?
So that's just the rope, the duck?
And then up in paragraph two, there are references to Phase One. It's, should be, it has numerical one, but I think our defined terms now are spelled out.
So where are you, Betsy?
Paragraph two, complete required water and sewer connections.
On the previous page you were on.
I'm on 12, where are we, am I?
Our pagination's a little off from-
Our pagination's off, so I'm like, yes, sorry. So I'm sending it backwards.
Under C4 though, C4 number two is what Betsy's referring to and-
Oh, I see, yeah.
Under the phases, just call it Phase One spelt out and Phase Two spelt out?
Yep.
Down in five, the reference.
Inconsistent.
Okay, on 12, C5, Diane is going to fix it, or maybe she already has the indentation?
Well, we already took that out, didn't we?
Shows you my skill with a computer.
Yeah, I fixed the applicant thing. It took a while because it kept moving it, but yeah.
And then under number one, C5. Submit to the building commissioner in digital file format if final has built utilities plan including profiles. My understanding is that's not needed because it's going to be a private road?
Is that correct, Scott?
If it's private, yes, but if it ever wants to become town, okay.
So can we just eliminate including profiles?
But you will have a record of it? If it ever, I'm just, if it ever becomes before the town to be town property, town road?
Oh, it'll never come to.
We say never now, Frank.
Well, if they don't, they can't do it.
Well, according to this decision, we, right now, it's private, we have to keep it private.
Okay, alright.
So you want to comment after plan and delete including profiles?
Yes, and so just deleting the word including profiles, those two words. And then under item three, again deleting out in the town of Foxborough Conservation Commission. This is nothing to do with stormwater management in their decision.
I have one other comment on 12.
Go ahead.
C5, one, this is, this is very, very picky and I'm sure it's boilerplate, but on the one, two, three, fourth sentence down after building commissioner, where it says AutoCAD files delivery. I would just take out Auto because that's a brand name of product and different trades may be using different things. I would just call it CAD because CAD is a blanket term.
Good, thank you.
Because no one's using really AutoCAD anymore.
One for the other.
Right.
Alright, why don't we go back to this? Did Paige give Frank one or?
I didn't give you everything because they're not perfect, we'll just talk it through.
Okay, why don't we go back to the one we're talking about, what page?
Page nine, number four.
Anything else on 12? And 13?
Oh, we can go to that later, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Alright, so actually. On page 12 still. Again, we went over number three, deleting out the town of Foxborough Conservation Commission. And item number five, which says certification by the town foxborough's peer review engineer and the building commissioner that all off-site measures that may be required pursuant to this comprehensive permit are complete.
Yeah, I don't think there are any off-site measures, are there?
There's one.
One?
The water line between the two entrances we're replacing.
And, and so, what we'd just like to do is take out the word that may be required. And just say measures pursuant to this comprehensive permit decision. Because it in there does have that water line, you know, to loop the site and connect it in front of the property, the water line. So if we could just eliminate again the word that may be required, so just as measure pursuant to this comprehensive decision.
Okay, 13. Okay, thirteen.
I think we're okay.
All right. Fourteen.
On D8. Utilities included but not limited to telephone, electric, and cable shall be in accordance with requirements of DPW.
This was just a question we had relative sort of DPW jurisdiction over public, so I'm sorry, private utilities on a private road, such as like phone, cable, et cetera. Whereas it's, you know, the examples might, I guess, maybe be better if it's under DPW requirements, it might be water sewer. I just, so the question was just raised that, did it make sense, you know, when we read it, that's all. So it was just more of a question of public utilities versus private utilities versus public roadways versus private roadways, you know what I mean?
It's probably not under their authority. It's under governing utility company. That's going to take that responsibility.
So I don't think there are any requirements from our DPW.
Only the water.
Water and sewer.
Only the water and sewer.
Yeah, so you could, but not limited to water and sewer. And then delete telephone, electric, and cable?
Or just say water and sewer. Because if you say including but not limited to...
Oh, not limited to, thank you.
You know.
I didn't go to law school.
I hate the term not, but not limited to.
Lawyers use it all the time.
I know.
Probably should have used it yesterday as far as the amendment.
So just water and... Water and sewer shall be in accordance with requirements of the DPW?
I think we need something after water and sewer. Water and sewer lines?
Connections.
Systems?
Connections, yeah.
Connections? Systems? Connections?
Connections.
Water and sewer connections?
Systems and connections.
That's what I was just thinking.
So we're saying water and sewer, systems and connections shall be in accordance with requirements of the DPW?
We have a question on D9. It's very broad language. We're just wondering what you're looking for there. If it's just the backfill material, what's going in there, that's one thing. Jesse, we just wants to know what that encompasses because it could be very broad.
Is it compaction? Is it just contents?
Well, if utilities go under a street, it's got to be flowable fill sometimes. There's... It's getting signed off by the civil engineer.
Like what is typically required on a private way?
Again, if it's over a road and it's not, I mean, like water lines, they've got to be four feet down. Sewer lines, I don't know the regulations on those.
But again, this is, we're talking about soil material.
I think this is basically something they're saying that your civil engineer is going to sit there and have to make that determination of what is appropriate.
Appropriate for what?
For the backfill. That's what I'm seeing. The soil, what material can be utilized for that backfill?
Yeah, but he's saying he has to certify to you.
Yeah, he stamps it and he says, "Yes, I'm doing this within accordance with the regulations for each, for the pipes and access drives and structures." Structures. I'm not following what you're trying to...
I think the question is, is not what he's specifying, is he onsite, you know, observing all of the fill being installed for certification? Or is he relying on the subcontractor to certify what he's bringing? And that's what we're trying to, he's trying to understand his scope on the actual install.
He's actually taking full responsibility of all of it. So whoever works under them is on him, on them. So he's certifying that they're doing it to the best practice.
Well, he has to certify it to you in writing.
Usually that's in a form of an affidavit after the fact.
Okay. Okay, I mean...
And you're just looking for the material that was used?
Yeah, I think this is kind of standard. Like, we don't see it much on the planning side of it, but I know like when Norm, our inspection engineer, he would be out in the field when they're laying roads and doing things, checking temps, checking to make sure the coarseness or whatever matched the application. So I think it's a standard practice for engineering.
But he's there.
He is, but whatever your engineer is going to require in order to get himself comfortable.
We're going to have testing materials anyhow.
I mean, you guys are going to want this anyway. You're not going to have guarantees on pavement unless you do it right.
It's going to rely on other people. It'd be fine.
Go rely on other people to give them the information and he'll certify to it.
Very rarely are they there every day.
Right.
Right, that's where, yeah.
But they're taking responsible, responsibility every day.
So whatever they're comfortable with.
Yeah.
Just put their signature on it.
Okay, we just, yeah, we're just trying to get some clarity on that. Okay.
Fifteen.
So we're going to look at fourteen.
Is he on fifteen?
On D12. At the very ending, we just like to, we were to during the construction period. There's just a little concern after phase one, there could be a year or two, economy goes bad, maybe three, between the two phases.
What number you on?
Where no construction's going on.
D12.
So, D12, so we would like to say the ending be during the construction period.
Instead of the project, just duration of the construction period. It's that way during the construction of phase one, we're going to apply, you know, comply, and then during the construction period of phase two, we'll comply.
No, but we do anticipate there'll be some downtime between the two phases. It could be a few years. And in reading it, you could read it that, during that whole time, it's during duration of construction. So we just wanted to fine tune that a little bit.
So delete of the project and put in during the construction period in its place?
Yeah, that would be helpful.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
And then on D14. The last sentence. A security contractor shall be utilized. We'd like to just change that to a designated individual shall be responsible to open and close. Because typically it's one of their employees.
The site superintendent.
Site superintendent.
Instead of a separate security contractor. So there'll be someone that's responsible. So a designated individual shall be responsible to open and close the site daily.
So a designated individual of the applicant?
Okay. That's fine.
Yep.
Or general contractor, yeah.
Yeah.
We can designate.
We can designate.
Sorry, I'm thinking it out loud.
Or the applicant. Do what I say. We'll have to contract with them anyways.
Okay, on sixteen?
On E4. On the second line, town construction standards in accordance with the final plans. Like to add then the words as shown for phase one and subsequently phase two. And then continue the sentence. So after final plans, add the words again, as shown for phase one and subsequently phase two.
Okay. All right.
At one, you have Foxborough, Foxborough Fire Department. Double Foxborough.
Extra strength.
Anything else on sixteen?
No.
And seventeen, G9, to be deleted.
G9's being deleted?
Yeah, that's the one with individual water. Service, that's again a vestige from the last one.
Yep.
That I overlooked when I revised this.
On H1, the second line, roadway shown on final plans. Again, if we could add the words for phase one and subsequently phase two. And that continues providing access. Did you get that?
Where are you?
Um, H1 on page seventeen.
Okay.
The second line, not sentence, that's roadway shown on the final plans.
Yeah.
Afterword, final plans, if we could add for phase one and subsequently phase two.
On G7, which starts at sixteen and ends on seventeen, where it talks about should any appeal, the order of conditions result in elimination or modification of any condition of the order of conditions? I think that's specific to Moore Street.
Dana, where, where is it?
At the top of page seventeen, which is a continuation of G7. Where it talks about, you know, the order of conditions and if there's any appeals, should any appeal, the order of conditions result in elimination or modification of any condition of the order of conditions and the applicant seek to notify the project? I don't think the buildings have anything to do with the conservation commission.
So you're pretty much saying that everything after the phrase registry, indeed, should be deleted?
Yeah, because it...
Is that correct?
I would think, because that... Frank, you still have to, do you have to file with the state again for the isolated land on the site? So you only had the O-Rat and that's all there is?
Not to my knowledge, but again, you know, there's no appeal. So, you know, I didn't have a problem with it because it's kind of moved.
Read it then.
Okay.
Doesn't change the page, so. Perfect.
I didn't see what she was saying.
I'm sorry?
I understood what she was saying.
Yeah.
Thought about it, yeah.
You're going to modify the project based on the O-Rat?
Page eighteen. I six. I don't know if we should define that a little bit better, whether, you know, just changing on a few windows, is that going to be altering the exterior of the building?
Material alterations, maybe?
You know, for site plan, things like that, you couldn't put anything like this in there.
You know, again, like any other modification, there would have to be a determination whether it's substantial or insubstantial. I think, I think I'd rather leave it the way it is and we'll deal with it if and when it becomes an issue. And I don't think it'll become an issue. Again, if you're just going to change something that's minor, I don't think we're going to be concerned about it.
The only concern is, I don't know, you think it's not going to be an issue, but times change. And people sitting in these chairs are different. You don't know what's going to be...
It's going to be here forever.
Over the next 99 years.
I got this one covered, don't worry about it.
You know, something to, you know, a significant change.
Substantial changes, yeah.
Substantial exterior alterations.
Yeah, and any language that says that the board will not unreasonably withhold.
I'm sorry, any?
And the board will not... Will not unreasonably withhold approval, language to that effect.
So would it be just subject to substantial changes then? Is that sort of what we're talking about? Rather than minor things would be, okay, that makes sense.
So just use the word substantial at the beginning?
Yeah.
Here's where it gets tricky. Who determines substantial?
Oh, I assume that was already defined somewhere. I guess not.
Is it criteria whether or not you pull a permit?
Of course. I'm sorry?
Is it criteria whether or not you pull a permit?
No.
Doesn't really limit...
Well, you can't remove a window. You can't even breathe without a permit, basically, so. So if you go to change a window or a door, it requires a building permit.
Yeah. I mean, technically, re-roofing, somebody could make you come in here if they want to change the color of shingles.
Correct. I mean, it'd probably be my determination on substantial. Like if they're going to put like a facade or, or some kind of breezeway or some substantial change. If you're swapping out for cotton in kind, that wouldn't be...
Well, again, you know, the reference here is to the, the regulations. And the regulations distinguish between what's substantial and what's insubstantial. So typically, if there's a modification of a decision, it's up to us to determine whether it's substantial.
Oh, you can take the, oh!
So, you know, for example, we've done it before with fences to determine that it's insubstantial. We did it with a dog run area to determine that it was insubstantial. But it's our determination and there are, in the regulations, five references to what's substantial and five references to what's insubstantial. So for example, if there was a major change in the number of units, that might be deemed to be substantial. You know, something such as, um... You know, a window or a door, you know, I think we would deem it to be insubstantial.
Or a paint job or something.
Or painting, or...
Re-roofing.
Re-roofing, stuff like that.
But they would still have to come before the board to get that approval? That, that's what, because then it's going to be everything. Yeah, I mean...
And I don't think that was the intent or practicality of...
We haven't come to that yet with any of them as to...
And nor, probably will you, but... But that could be trim repair. I mean, it could be anything.
Ten years from now, whatever.
If it's in kind, is that, could that...
That's what I said previously. I was like, if it's in kind...
Then it's already part of, yeah. That would at least alleviate maintenance issues.
And repairs, and, and, and maintenance, you know, scheduled maintenance. Because you'll have to replace the roof every twenty years.
It's very subjective.
You know?
It probably tends to rest with the building commissioner. I mean, really, it's going to be, he's the first line of defense or whomever's in that seat 20 years from now and will have to decide whether a window, you know, a flabbered or a roof or anything, they'll...
Yeah, so if they want to change, you know, the siding thirty years is shot, they just want to swap it out.
Yeah, same, but if they were going to suddenly go like red, you know, it might have to come in, or, you know, if you were going to go suddenly from, you know, black windows to purple windows, just that kind of, you know, obviously, we have to, you're not going to, but I think it's, you want the maintained, sort of a general appearance.
Yep.
As approved.
It should include replacement, in-kind repair and/or replacement, because if you replace a window...
Sure.
That's a distinction between repairing it.
Yeah, I think that's maintenance.
Yeah, you replace a roof, you replace a window, yeah.
So what I got right now is substantial exterior alterations of buildings that do not constitute ordinary and routine maintenance and repair, and that are consistent with the appearance of buildings as shown in the approved plans are prohibited. And then at the end, we can put, I think that's it. So again, it'll be substantial exterior alterations of buildings, substantial exterior alterations of buildings that do not constitute ordinary and routine maintenance and repair, and that are consistent with the appearance of buildings as shown in the approved plans are prohibited unless authorized.
I would say maintenance, repair, or replacement.
Maintenance, repair, or replacement.
Thank you. Good.
That works.
Perfect, thank you. Okay? All right?
Back to I four. It says, "Trashing and disliking services with respect to the project are not the responsibility of the town, of the town of Foxborough."
So which one is that?
I four.
I four.
To take out one of the, of the towns.
Yep. Okay. Anything else at eighteen? Anything on nineteen? We've got two to go back on. And Diana, we're going to remove the numbering on the two exhibits, correct?
Yeah, because we've got to put the waivers before this, so that wouldn't mess up the numbering.
Yeah, so the waivers will be Exhibit A.
And just in Exhibit B submissions to the board, it says Weston and Sampson, but it says and, and then A-M-P. I don't know where the A-M-P came from, but...
Okay. It's under the traffic assessment.
Under both of them, traffic assessment and utility and stormwater.
Okay.
All right.
So going to...
I just have two small, little messy ones. The Exhibit B, traffic impact assessment and utility stormwater report, Weston and Ampersand and...
That's what we just said.
Oh, did, I wasn't listening then, sorry. Focus like when you focus on what you're going to say. Thank you, sorry. Wasn't good in school with that.
Hey, at least you caught it twice.
I'm like, gotta get it in.
So page nine, item number four. Paige, you have any thoughts as to which of these would be most applicable, or...
Um, I think we'd have to modify either of them. I mean, I think I'd probably say something like the applicant shall provide a performance guarantee in the sum of, whatever it was, twenty-five hundred dollars?
Five thousand.
Five thousand, sorry. To, I don't even know if we want to say guaranteed trees and landscaping, it's more for, in the event, something, let's see, twenty-five hundred, five thousand dollars, in the event the project, I'm trying to think of it, the project fails to proceed, you know, land, trees, I'm not right, it needs to be written out. I can't do this off my head, but...
Well, right, right now, what I've gotten written down is, "Provide security in the amount of five thousand dollars toward the cost of restoration of landscaping to the benefit of abutting properties."
And the town.
And the town?
Yeah.
And then the next sentence would start with, you know, "The funds will be used to restore the site should the project be abandoned."
Perfect. I mean, you might even want to clarify that of, you know, restore the site, but, and I would, with particular emphasis on the neighborhoods in North High, and maybe Walnut Street, something, just so that if, you know, ten years from now, and you guys aren't here, they remember the intent was really to ensure that it goes back to protecting the abutting properties.
Yeah.
Not like, you're never going to get five thousand dollars worth of trees to replace a whole site, it's really going to have to be targeted.
So you want to just say, "To the benefit of abutting properties on North High Street?"
Yes.
Okay.
And Walnut.
And Walnut.
Yeah.
So it's North High and Walnut Streets. Do we need the town of Foxborough?
No, I think that's fine, then, that's fine.
Yeah. Okay, I want to go back to B one.
Can I just, I'm sorry, I know, we do, I know this meeting is not open for public comment, but I just want to make sure, since we do have some neighbors here, that we explain to them, if it's not, if it's not clear, exactly what this is for. So it's my understanding, and tell me if I'm wrong, is that if the project proceeds as intended, we will not use this at all. This is only if some very strange, strange unforeseen thing happens, there's money there if the project had already begun, just to make sure that...
Does that have a provision that, when it gets returned?
Yeah, I was just going to say that.
And so I just want to make sure, am I, sorry?
That's fine, I was just going to say, and then we might need a provision that, when it gets returned, when we complete the project or something?
Uh, I think that's in there, isn't it?
Yeah, upon permanent stabilization, blah, 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 the applicant may submit a request for release of the charity.
I don't think there's any drainage infrastructure that's going to be...
I know, that's a little... I mean, at what point would it trigger? Would it be the issuance of a building permit for Building Three? Or would it be the occupancy of a building permit for Permit Three that would sort of trigger that?
I'm thinking of CFO.
That's the cleanest.
That's what I was thinking.
So maybe say, you know, upon CFO, for the final building, because if it's, the final building is two, you know, if you decide, oh, we're not doing Building Three for whatever reason, then that would be, you know, we'd have to use that money, and then...
You could post the money, return the money for CFO after the two permits are pulled, and then post it again for the third building, just to keep it clean.
Hmm. I don't think it would be clean on this decision, though. You're going to have to remain in compliance, like, I mean, you'd have to change that.
You know, and just so clear, it says, "And no construction activity takes place for a year." So the project has to be abandoned and no construction activity takes place for a year, because more than likely, there's going to be...
Could be more than a year.
A year plus, it could be a few years between Phase One and Phase Two, just because of the funding mechanisms. So again, it has to be abandoned before you guys can even take the money.
Yeah.
And it's really there as an incentive, you know, to get it all squared away. So on the, on Building Threes, I can see permit, we can have it released, request to be released, that's fine.
Okay, so...
So that last sentence will be changed.
Send me what that's going to say.
Upon the issuance of the occupancy, building...
Well, just send me the whole number four, between you two.
So let me go to item B one. And Frank, share the email with you, because your other board members haven't seen this. So when Judy initially wrote this, B one said something to the effect of, "At least twenty-five percent of the units have to, you know, be within the AMI." And I changed it to, as you see here, each of the two hundred units. So Judy's reasoning for the twenty-five percent is as follows, and let me just read from her email. There is one item that I need to mention because it may confuse people. Under affordability, the decision restricts the affordable units to eighty percent AMI, not the sixty percent AMI that's required for LIHTC projects. The reason is that if the project ever had to be taken over by a lender and sold, the project would still have to comply with DHCD's comprehensive rules, which would be twenty-five percent affordable for people at eighty percent AMI, but the sale would not necessarily be contingent on compliance with LIHTC rules. Just want to make you aware of this because it has come up in other comprehensive permits for LIHTC developments. The fact is that Beacon, that's where we get the Beacon again, we'll have to comply with the require, we'll have to comply with the requirements of all of the various subsidies that will ultimately go into this development. So the risk is some type of foreclosure is basically, so the risk is some type of foreclosure is basically non-existent, but I cannot write the permit to say that the units will be affordable at sixty percent AMI in perpetuity. I understand what Judy, I understand what Judy was saying when I got this Friday night. I completely forgot about it on Saturday afternoon when I started revising. I also had forgotten what I had for breakfast on Saturday morning, but that's a different issue. Have you seen this at all?
Yeah, and there's a couple things. A hundred percent of the units absolutely will be below eighty. We do have tax credit restrictions that will kind of overlay the sixty percent requirements, but in our, one of our phases, it has a small band between sixty and eighty, so trying to say that all the units are going to be, I think the decision, in our experience, is just what we said, two hundred units, all below eighty is what this is intended to do. There may be some additional restrictions that will all be recorded, different terms based on the financing, that will be sixty percent and fifty percent, and then a small band of thirty percent. So I do think that the, the way it's drafted is the, is the clean way to do this, and not try to cross, cross collateralize almost, you know?
And if there's a bankruptcy, and the bank takes over, then we have to deal with DHCD rules again, which would be inconsistent with what the housing authority wants. And I guess the answer is, we'll deal with it. When Frank and I spoke briefly about it this morning, you know, I think my comment was, well, Judy can't write it that way, but it's now our opinion, or our decision, so I think I'm happy with the way it's written. I think it's consistent with what the application is, and what we're approving.
And we're very comfortable with the language.
It works for us. And I don't see Judy here to contradict me, so. So I think what I'd like to do is to have a motion to approve the written decision, and to grant the comprehensive permit, subject to the various amendments and revisions that we have discussed and agreed upon.
So moved.
Lorraine, you're voting on this one, so.
Yes.
Second it?
Second, sir. Second.
Okay, any further discussion or comment? Okay, I'll probably, because we're on cable, I'll do it by roll call. Actually, do you have any questions or comments?
I don't know.
Okay, so Lorraine?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
And Barney?
Yes.
So I guess what we can do, we can sign, and then Diana will work assiduously tomorrow. Paige will give her all the opportunity she needs to, to make these changes, and we should have to file with the town clerk before the end of the week.
Fantastic.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I think what will happen is, Diana will, after the changes are made, she can send to both of us, or to all of us, and we'll just take one last, you know, run through it.
All right, if we come down to close to the deadline, we can extend it for another week if necessary.
Diana, you don't think that's a problem from your standpoint, do you?
No.
Okay, so unless we have some discrepancy as far as wording, we'll, we should be okay.
And if I could just say one other thing? So today, we had the opportunity to meet with the Chairman of the Joint Committee on Housing for the Commonwealth, and Jim Acero, he came down today, and along with Representative Jay Barrows, and we met with, Greg was with us as well, and we had a great conversation. He wanted to come down and actually see the site, and Paige was there as well with us. And so I just wanted to say thank you to the board very much. We expressed to the Housing Chairman how, what a great experience it's been so far in, in Foxborough, and he was very impressed, I think, with everyone and everyone's collaboration. He, he, he wanted, he was talking in the future, but he could definitely see how this is a model for other communities, so I just wanted to share those comments because I thought it was heartfelt, and I think for us, it was, it's been a great experience, we just wanted to say thank you.
We appreciate your time, really.
Thank you. Any idea when the next, what the next step is, and when?
Going for the money. The applications are, the pre-apps are ready to go in, lot of communication back and forth with DHCD. Today's purpose was to make sure we could both, you know, support, if the bids come out for the Public Works, that money will be there to support that in tandem with the financing. There's a little bit of unknown because we're out of round as to when they'll make the announcements on the state funding, and then we're starting to work with the bond issuers right now for what will be the permanent debt going on the property. So it's, as they say, most of it's financing, but we also want to make sure that the Public Works has the funds. Could be really soon, it could be sometime this summer that they make announcements.
Good luck, and hopefully it'll be soon for your, I guess for our sake, too.
We all want it, yeah.
Thank you.
Will you have any other business? So a motion to adjourn?
I will adjourn.
Second?
Second. Okay, Kim?
Yes.
Lorraine?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
And Barney, yes, we are done, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to thank and acknowledge this board, we've been through a lot since, uh, since last June, and, you know, you have had a lot on your plate this year. It's been a busy year for your folks, and two fortyBs in there, and you adjusted the schedule for this one, so, thank you, because that's not unnoticed, you know, this has been a big effort on the town's part, so, thank you.
Thank you.
I know you have a few gray hairs from it, but here's to a quieter twenty-twenty-three.
You want to sign now?